I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for Thursday, September 15th. Please silence cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'd like to introduce the board and staff from the audience left to right. Jerry Potamus, associate; James Morse, the clerk; I'm Scott Peterson, I'm the vice chair; Suzanne Murphy, voting member; Mark Fineran, voting member; Noreen Stockman, who's our zoning administrator; and Ashley DeMello, who's our office assistant. Without them, none of this would happen this evening. The zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on applications. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to rendering a decision. To begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read the pertinent information from the file. The applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation. Time may be extended by the vote of the board. The board will then question the applicant. Next, the public will be invited to comment. Public comments should be directed only at the project. Please refrain from making personal or derogatory statements. And they can include an opinion in favor or in opposition or ask a question about the project. Comments should be limited to two minutes. The chair will limit discussion in the interest of time if comments become repetitive. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record. Speak into the microphone. It does not amplify your voice, but it's provided for the FCTV viewers. The board may continue the hearing to a future date and time. Otherwise, when the board is satisfied that enough information has been presented to make a decision, the hearing will be closed. After the hearing is closed, no more testimony may be taken. The board shall discuss the proposal among themselves then make a motion to approve or deny the application. The motion will be followed by a summary of key findings and conditions. The affirmative vote of four members, supermajority, is required for the approval of special permits, variances, or appeals. A split vote, three to two, is a failure to carry and would result in denial. Any zoning board of appeals decisions may be appealed as provided for in the Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Article 17. Moving on to tonight's agenda. We first start off with public opinion, uh, public comments. Does anybody have any comments or issues that they'd like to bring to the board that's not on the agenda for this evening? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to continuations, we also have none. So we're here to reorganize the board. Our chair, after four and a half years, TJ Hury, has moved on to sandwich, and so that leaves the chair position open. So therefore, we would have to fill that first. So since the role is open and must be filled, I would like to make a motion for James Morse to be the chair.
I'll second.
And Jerry will second. Quick, thank you, Jerry. Any other discussions?
Would you like me to step out so you can badmouth me?
No, not this time.
We can do it live.
Or later.
Or later.
So let's just have a vote. Jerry, how would you vote?
Aye.
Scott Peterson, aye.
Suzanne Murphy, aye.
Mark Fineran, aye.
Aye. So the vote carries.
I will accept. Thank you.
And you will accept? Well, thank you very much. Congratulations. You are now the chair.
Does that mean we have to switch chairs?
No, here, but I'll give you this gavel. And now I believe since the clerk's position...
So as the former acting clerk, the clerk's position is now vacant at this point. At this point, I will make a motion to nominate Suzanne Murphy as the ZBA clerk.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you accept?
I do.
Thank you, Suzanne. You're now the clerk.
Yay. And I'll make a nomination for Scott for vice chair.
I'll second.
Wow, that's a lot of votes.
Discussion on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
New hearings.
Next up, we have new hearings. Application 59-22, oh boy, One Lookout Avenue, Falmouth, requesting a special permit to remove a portion of the existing dwelling, remove and rebuild a roof over the portion of the dwelling, adding a half-story, and rebuild the rear of the dwelling, adding a second-story addition. I believe we have a request for a continuance on this matter. Is that correct, Noreen?
Yes, there's a letter in the file requesting a continuance from the hearing to October 20th.
How would the board like to proceed?
I'll make a motion to continue.
So a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the matter? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Continued to October 20th this year, requested the applicant. Moving on, we have application 60-22, Lambert, 30 Davis Road, requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling. Madam clerk, if you will, read in the notice and appropriate referrals.
Do I have stuff here? Hold on.
Right here, coming down.
Oh, there we go. I'm like, wait a minute.
It's in one of those pages.
Ah, thanks. Lindt, that's it right there. Good.
Noreen, do you want to assist since we're all brand new?
I'll just read the regular hearing of this one, right? This is case 060-22, Lambert, at 30 Davis Road in Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct in addition to the nonconforming single-family dwelling. And then I'll just go through this if I'm correct. Okay, Scott, thank you. That's just the comment, the headline. Okay, we have a letter. Oh, all of them. Oh, okay. Oh, millions of them. Okay, gotcha.
This is just the...
Aren't you happy to pass that off?
That's right. Okay. Okay, we have correspondence from Conservation. They have no comment. We have Board of Health. Oh, Town Engineer. We have... We have five items. The application was reviewed for impacts to the public right-ofways and public utilities. Davis Road is a public right-ofway in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-ofway. Any changes within the right-ofway would require a filing, to require a filing with a permit with the Engineering Division. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities will require permission from the appropriate town department. Number three, this project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public right-ofway. Number four, we recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. And number five, it appears that a portion of the fence is located within the public right-ofway. Permit installation of objects are not owned, not owned by the town located within the municipal right-ofway typically require a license from the selectmen. We refer to the zoning board of appeals if this matter should be addressed prior to any approval or as a condition of any approval. Let's find out the board here. This is no comment from the fire department. There it is, planning. No comment from the planning department. The water department. The comments are, the existing home has a town water. It's a three-quarter service right now. The service needs to be upgraded to a one-inch to meet town standards. The meter will have to be located inside the home if it's not already there. That's it for them. Board of Health, I know the name. Board of Health. An older septic system is serving this property and it cannot have addition flow. No bedrooms added to it. Plans indicated two-bedroom home, and that is consistent with the assessment. This project proposes a third bedroom. Health would not sign on a future building permit for this project based on the plan submitted. Okay? And assessors have no comment, and that's it. And then we have a few letters. One, two, three, four, five, six. Six letters. I think two is support, three support, four is support, five support, and six. And that's what we have for...
For the elements.
Good evening, Chair. Congratulations. May your reign be long and just. For the record, my name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney here in Falmouth. I'm here tonight representing Michael and Linda Lambert, the owners of 30 Davis Road. Mr. Lambert is here with us in the audience this evening. We're here tonight because they are seeking a modest addition to the existing nonconforming dwelling. This property, 30 Davis Road, is located in Falmouth Center, in the Village, a very well-established residential neighborhood. This lot is well-sized for the area. It's 16,339 square feet. It's in a residential C zoning district, and it is not in a flood zone. The existing structure here is a one-story, two-bedroom dwelling with a footprint of just over 1,800 square feet, representing lot coverage by structure of 11.1%. It is nonconforming in only one aspect, being the side yard setback to the southeast where it is 9.6 feet where 10 is required. It otherwise complies with all setback requirements as well as lot coverage requirements. The existing ridge height here is approximately 15 feet. They are proposing additions, a small addition to the rear of the home, which is shown here, labeled proposed addition, as well as an expansion to the existing deck to the, I suppose that's the north, actually, or northwest. The result of these additions, the proposed addition to the home, is a first-floor master suite with a new bathroom. We did submit revised architectural plans which seek to eliminate one of the existing bedrooms so that the end result will be a two-bedroom home. This will be converted to an office with a four-foot cased opening. This is a better use of the existing space, more functionality for the applicants. The proposal does not affect the only existing nonconforming setback and does not create any new nonconformities. The area, the ridge height, rather, of the proposed addition area is only 12 feet 4 inches, which is below the existing ridge height. Due to the existing nonconforming setback, this does require a special permit under 243C of the zoning bylaw. That section states that pre-existing nonconformities are not changed without special permit, provided this board finds that the proposed alteration is not substantially more detrimental than what exists. In order to determine that, the board is asked to consider the standards of 240-216 and whether or not the alteration creates any new dimensional nonconformities, impairs views and vistas, and reasonably conforms to the neighborhood. Here, there's no new nonconformity created, and the existing nonconforming setback is unaffected. I think it's worth pointing out that the side yard setback that is nonconforming is nonconforming by .4 feet, so let's call it three and a half inches, three inches. It's basically, basically the minimus. If this lot was only slightly larger, it actually wouldn't require a special permit. But because it's under 20,000 square feet, it does. The property is to remain conforming in all other aspects, all other setback requirements as well as lot coverage percentages. The proposed lot coverage by structure will remain at only 13%, well below the 20% that is allowed by right. There's no impacts to views and vistas. This won't impact any views in public ways. And the structure as designed will remain consistent with the surrounding neighborhood, both in size and in scope. We are aware of the engineering referral. We will, we intend to apply for a license from the Board of Selectmen. And the site plan was revised to show a dry well, which was added to the plan that you see before you. In addition, we were responsive to the Board of Health, the Health Department referral as well, eliminating one of the existing bedrooms, converting that to an office with a four-foot cased opening, so that this will remain a two-bedroom home. The proposed alteration is a significant improvement for the applicants, both in terms of their utilization of the space and just daily, day-to-day life. It will not create any new nonconformities or impact the existing nonconformity. It will result in an attractive, useful dwelling which is in character with the neighborhood. I can't find any adverse effects to this application, and certainly none that would overbalance the benefits. I believe that this more than meets the requirements of 243C and 240-216. And based on that information, I would ask that this board grant the special permit, and I'd be happy to address any questions that you might have at this time.
Sorry, I should have announced the beginning of the hearing. We are still short, so Jerry Potamus will be a full voting member on this hearing. Questions for the applicant? Jerry?
None at this... No, I think he answered all the questions.
Scott?
Hammer it home one more time. Two bedrooms, correct?
Yes, two bedrooms.
Thank you very much.
Four-foot cased opening, office.
Perfect. Thank you.
Suzanne, questions? Come on, Seth. Thank you. Mark?
No, just a comment. I went three times to this property, once two weeks ago or so, and then I called the office and found out the stakes are supposed to be in seven days before. So we went by earlier this week, and the stakes still weren't in. And I just happened by yesterday afternoon, and I did see him and was able to make my visit, but they were only put in a day before, and not the seven days. So had I not happened by, we'd be continued for no reason tonight.
Completely understood, and that was an error on our part. The staking wasn't done in time. It was, it was put into place. We notified the zoning administrator as soon as we realized that there was an error. So that was, she was notified yesterday that they were in place, and it was a mistake, and I apologize.
And I didn't notify her on Monday when I went by, which was my mistake.
Yep. So that's duly noted, and we apologize for any inconvenience that caused any of the board members.
Attorney Clower, what's the date of the revised plans showing the cased entrance and production of bedrooms?
Architects aren't always, architects and designers aren't always great about putting the revision date, and I don't believe they did on this one. If the board wants to have a condition that we submit a new set with a revision date added, I'd be happy to do so, but it doesn't...
Just want to make sure it's clear that it's two bedrooms on what he's controlling.
Yep.
Yeah, this is 6-1...
The plans are dated 6-1, but I think, I think both the initial and...
Actually, the 27th of June on the front page.
We're going to get new ones anyway, so it's a revised plan with the cased opening.
Ridge heights remaining at 15 feet?
Correct. The proposed addition has a ridge height of 12 feet 4 inches, and there's no change to the primary ridge.
Questions from the public? Would you just step up to the microphone, sir?
My name is Robert Bordalow. I'm a resident of 33 Minor Street, which is in back of the property in question. I don't have an issue with the, with the appeal. Well, Suzanne Murphy made mention of a, a right-ofway. I've never heard of a right-ofway near us, and I just didn't know what, I'd like to have, to know more about that.
Clarification, yeah. I don't remember saying anything like that.
I believe, sir, there's a fence that encroaches on a town way. That happens sometimes. So there's a fence that's beyond the property line, or beyond the owner's property line.
Because as far as I know, it's all private property around his property. We would be the right-ofway.
I'm going to let Attorney Clower answer your questions, sir.
Hi, sir, and through the board, if I may. If you look at the front of the plan, with the engineer's referral, said that the applicant's fence encroaches into the town right-ofway. Davis Road is a town right-ofway. It's been taken by the town. So, so this, this fence here is an encroachment into the town right-ofway that the applicant will be seeking a license for in front of the Board of Selectmen. I think typically the condition is that they have applied prior to the issuance of a building permit, which we're happy to apply, or can, happy to comply with. Comply and apply, just mixed me up there, sorry.
Other questions from the public? Any follow-up questions from the board? How would the board like to proceed?
Motion to close?
Second.
Motion to close, but by Scott, second by Jerry. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How would the board like to proceed now?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I'll give it to you.
We'll fight.
Findings.
Good for findings, just the typical...
It's not in a flood plain.
243C.
Okay.
Not more detrimental. Testimony is there, seek to put a modest addition to create a master bedroom. The only nonconformity is a side yard setback of six inches, currently nine feet 6 inches where 10 is required. Existing structure is 1,810 square feet or 11.1%. What is proposed is 2,013 square feet or 13%. Locust is in an RC zone in a FEMA flood zone of X. Six letters of support from abutters, one question from the general public at the hearing, not in favor or support, just concerning about an encroachment. Drywells are proposed on the plans. Testimony is that, revised plan submitted indicating this could remain at two bedrooms. One existing bedroom is being reduced to an office with four-foot cased opening. There's a portion of a fence that is encroaching on the public right-ofway. Testimony is the applicant will be required for a license or remove it. Home has an existing three-quarter inch water service, which needs to be updated to a one... One inch. I've forgotten anything.
Uh, no. Ridge height?
Twelve feet 4 inches.
Twelve feet 4 inches, yeah.
No opposition in the file, no opposition offered at the hearing. Got it, findings, conditions?
You wanted the date, the plans...
Per revised plans. Yep.
By the Board of Selectmen for a license.
License for the encroachment or removal. Standard hours of work, materials to be in the yard, drywells, new roof area be added, water service to be updated to one inch for water department standards.
Could be it.
Anything else?
That's it.
All those in favor, please, anybody saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
So for findings, we just go back to the...
Usually, yes. This is our list or anything else that comes in. Next up, we have application 61-22, Finnegan, 10 Cooper Road, East Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct a sunroom, addition, and an attached garage and living space exceeding 20% lot coverage by structures.
It's 061-22, Kevin O. Finnegan. No, that's not me.
Lambert.
That's...
6022, Lambert.
We just did Lambert.
We just did.
61-22.
Yep.
Okay. Kevin O. Finnegan at 37 Charter Ridge, Sandy Hook, Connecticut, applying to the zoning board of appeals for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-69E of the Code of Falmouth to construct a sunroom addition and an attached garage with living space above exceeding 20% lot coverage by structure on the subject property known as 10 Cooper Road in East Falmouth. Now, let's see what I have in here. No comments on this side, right? Let's go to the next, or here we are. All right, this one... And here we have the Board of Health. Received, they received on 9/2 a septic system installation permit for a four-bedroom septic system to accommodate the bedroom over the garage. Conservation has no comment. Health, septic system is suitable for three bedrooms, but I think that'll just continue.
State 15, a predates.
Right, predates. See updated comment. So I'm going to just eliminate the rest of that condition because it all pertains. Correct? Engineering, see attached. We have five comments. This application was reviewed for impacts to public rights away and public utilities. Cooper Road is a public right-ofway in this area. No alterations are proposed in the right-ofway. Any changes to the right-ofway would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Number three, the project must not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public right-ofways. Four, two drywells are shown on the plan with roof drains connected to the proposed garage, as we typically recommend. However, there's no indication that the roof of the proposed sunroom would discharge to an infiltration measure. We recommend that the board add a condition that requires the addition of drywells, a rain garden, or other stormwater infiltration measures for the new roof area at a minimum. Five, where there is a small, where this is a small site with close abutting residents, we recommend that erosion and sediment controls are included for this project to protect the abutting properties and town right-ofway. We recommend that the plans be revised to include a demarcated limit of, limit of work and includes proposed erosion and sediment controls. We recommend the following condition to be included to any approval. Construction of this project shall follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. Document can be found in the Engineering Department. And then we have assessors' office. No comment. Water. The town water serves this, this existing home from the main and Cooper Road. The existing service is three-quarter... The existing service is three-quarter inch. It needs to be upgraded to one inch per town, per town standards. If the proposed addition increases the flow and/or pressure demands. Fire Department. No issues. Planning. I don't see anything from planning.
There's no comment.
No comment, there is a font. And then letters. I don't see any, or it might be in another section that I don't know of. I don't see any.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Good job.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Finnegan. I'm of Ten Cooper Road, East Falmouth, and I am the homeowner. Looking for a special permit pursuant to Falmouth Code to construct a new sunroom, as well as an attached garage with a bedroom and a bath above the garage. The, the reason for the permit is because of, it goes beyond the twenty percent lot coverage requirement. With the addition of the proposed garage and the sunroom, the lot coverage would be at twenty-two point one percent. The property is situated in the, in the Belmar neighborhood. The structure would conform to the size and character of, of the neighborhood. The dwelling itself would not be located in, in a floodplain. It complies with all setbacks after the dwellings are constructed. With respect to the referrals that were just read into the record, I believe that the site plan that you have before you includes the drywells and were refiled. And also, if you note, note eight, they added the, the provision that you read regarding the, the requirement for the construction of the project to follow the town's soil erosion and sediment control standard conditions. So that has been added to the, to the plan as well. The, we expect to the, the, the water referral, and talking to the Water Department, they've indicated that the existing service is at three-quarters and would be upgraded to, to one-inch service should the plumbing inspection determine that additional flow was needed or, or pressure demanded, the, the change to the service. We've checked the, the pressure, it seems like it would be okay, but obviously if the plumbing inspector finds that it's insufficient, we would upgrade it. With that, I'm looking for the board to approve my application for a special permit to, to construct the sunroom and the garage with the bedroom and bath above, and ask the, the board to approve that at this time.
Questions from the board, start with Mark.
You said the drywells were on the plan. I believe they indicated that the drywall they wanted was for the proposed sunroom, and there, in fact, are no, there is no drywall on the plan for the sunroom. Minor point here. On the site plan, it says twenty-two point one, and on the application, it's twenty-two point three percent. But the biggest thing I see is, this application was on the sixth of June. The site plan was done on the nineteenth of July, but on the fifteenth of August, it was indicated that with the fourth bedroom, you'd have to either eliminate one of the bedrooms, or upgrade the septic to a four-bedroom, Title V. Also, it's indicated that an application was, or was applied for on the second of September. But we have no plan for the septic system, and it's not indicated on the site plan, because it was predetermined that you needed one, so I don't see how we can go forward without it.
I'm sorry. I, I believe the, it was refiled, and the, the engineer, is it Health or Engi, I'm sorry.
Health. Health does...
Health Fed approved it. And I have, I have the, the drawing that was submitted.
We don't have it.
You're saying you don't have it?
And it's not in the file. And it says that the note from Health is that just an application was made. It makes no indication of any plan submitted, and, and it has to be put on the, the site plan itself, and ascertain that it's within the ten feet, or whatever it is of buildings. And it's, it obviously couldn't be on a plan that was done on the nineteenth of July. I'm not trying to, but I mean, that's just, and I applaud you for doing this all yourself. I think everyone should, but there are instructions for application on the website, and like I said, that we have, we have no septic plan here.
Yeah, no, I, I can appreciate that, and I, you know, I apologize. We had a problem with the, the builder who was building the property, they were supposed to be here to, to represent me, that, they clearly are not here. So I'm here on my own. I did, they were supposed to also, you know, help me with the septic plan. I was getting somebody to do the septic plan. They said they had filed that septic plan, and the, the septic plan had been, in fact, been approved by Scott McGann.
That's not it. We don't have a... Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, could you just start all that over?
Sure, sure, I apologize. No, so, again, you know, I, recognizing that the septic system needed to have an approval, I was able to talk to Scott McGann, and we had a septic plan, you know, drawn up and filed. It was filed, Scott issued this, my understanding, in talking to him, that he had issued the letter that, that's, I think you read from, Suzanne Murphy read, indicating that, that they had received the septic system plans, and, and that it was sufficient.
I believe it says "application." Doesn't it?
Applicant e, neither needs to upgrade, yeah, he doesn't...
No, that's from the fifteen, if you want the one, this one. But it says, I was just on the, if it's here, it's, no.
It's con con.
Yeah.
I didn't see an updated one from Scott.
No, it's, and it's not on the website, I was just looking for it.
I mean, it probably doesn't matter much, but this is the...
Could be me, could, could totally be me. Do you want to look through this?
This is the septic plan that was designed and submitted for approval, but again, I understand that perhaps...
What's the, what's the date on that?
It should be, I should have a date on it. August thirty-first.
These are July nineteenth, to a point.
Yeah, and it's, it's not on, it's not on the website, and it's not in our...
Okay, so we don't have in our possession a copy of that plan?
Okay, I can, yeah, they, they said they had filed it, but again, you say you don't have it, so you...
Probably gonna be looking for a continuance. I'd like to just see if there's other questions that you could address tonight, and we'll let you know what's gonna be needed to finish the hearing. Any other questions, do you, Mark?
No, that, that was, those were the two, basically.
Suzanne? No, I'm good.
Just if we can get the bedrooms corrected with the septic system, then I, then we're, I'm, I'm personally good.
Jerry?
I, I'm good, as soon as you get the septic tank approval, actually.
Right.
And the drywall of the sunroom.
And the drummers, right.
So if you could go back to the revised plans you had up on the, the screen a minute ago? I think some of those things have been addressed. I saw demarcation of work on those plans. I saw that the erosion and sediment controls are noted on the, the notes section there. So I think at this point, we need revised septic.
Because, once again, the sunroom has no drywells, though.
We'll need an additional, yep, most likely additional, either rain garden or drywall off of the, the new roof area.
And just for clarification for me, I think they added the, the drywells on the plan at the request. And they clearly, I see they added them to the, the garage. They appear, you know, there's two of them that appear. Do they, are we, is it, I just need them for the sunroom?
They were, they were fine.
They were put in the wrong spot.
You might need a... I think we'd need the revised correspondence from Board of Health, as well as the septic plan. Anything else you can think of, Noreen, or board members? That will need to get everyone's concerns or questions satisfied.
I'm good.
So I'd just encourage you, sir, just to reach out to the zoning administrator, Ashley. She can, she'll also likely follow up with an email, just explaining what's outstanding, to make sure we can complete your application. Say, do we have a date in mind to continue to?
I think it would be quick, you could probably just add it on to the twenty-ninth.
Is that gonna give you enough time, sir, the twenty-ninth, to get your documentation in order and filed?
I, I would think so, yes.
How would the board like to proceed?
That, sunroom's a perfect place for a rain garden. No, I mean, instead of a drywall.
Okay.
I mean, I used it in my house, it was fantastic.
And so the plan would reflect a rain garden?
Yeah.
Okay.
Whatever the engineer dictates.
Sure, that makes sense to me.
We don't tell you what to put in there.
We have a motion to continue.
Motion to continue to the twenty-ninth.
Second.
You appreciate your patience and your time.
Aye. Opposed? Motion, uh, hearing is continued to the twenty-ninth.
See on the twenty-ninth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have application six-two dash two-two, Katamet Sawmill Realty LLC, four ninety-four Thomas B. Landers Road, West Falmouth, requesting a special permit to construct an eight-unit contractor bay building with a height of twenty-five feet.
All right, let's get my stuff here together. Okay, we have an application for zero-six-two dash twenty-two, Katamet Sawmill Realty LLC, at four ninety-four Tommy B. Landers Road, in West Falmouth, Mass. For a, it's for a special permit pursuant to sections two four zero dash five seven H and two four zero dash seventy D of the Code of Falmouth to construct eight-unit contractor bay building, the height of twenty-five, and the subject property is four ninety-four Tommy Landers Road. I'll close that up.
We're false?
Oh, thanks, here we are. Butters. Katamet. Must be under here. Yep, there they are. Sorry, this is my first time, be patient.
It's Dante, I remember my first time.
It's my first time, too, so...
All right, here we have, um, can't tell who it is. Marine and Environmental Services, maybe?
Yeah.
No comment? That's a strange one. Con con, no comment. Health. Septic system appears suitably sized for the project. The floor drain regulations fall under the plumbing code, so refer to the plumbing inspector if we need more information. Engineering, see attached. Number one, the application was reviewed for impacts to the public rights-of-way and public utilities. Thomas B. Landers Road is a public right-of-way in this area. No alterations are proposed to the right-of, to the right-of-way. Any changes within the right-of-way would require filing a permit with the Engineering Division. Number two, any connections or alterations to public utilities would require permission from the appropriate town department. Number three, the project will not direct any stormwater runoff to public property, abutters, or public right-of-way. Four, the new building will require issuance of addresses by the Engineering Division. The building will be designated Building Seven, and the units will be designated Units A through H. We recommend the following condition be included in any approval. Upon completion of construction, the applicant shall post the address for this residence per ninety-nine dash one. A fixing of legible numbers required. Number five, we reviewed this plan for the planning board, and attached are the two review memos, all comments. Okay, let's see what we have from these guys. Sewage, the, the proposed subsurface sewage disposal system is subject to the Board of Health. Water, the proposed potable water system is subject to the Water Department. Parking and access, the proposed building is on an existing site with access via Tommy Landers Road. The proposed work will not require a driveway or a street opening permit. The new building and units will require issuance of addresses. And the other one is just the same, is the place must be numbered. Grading, the limit of work shown on the plan with the hay bale symbol, there will be no notes or de, or details with what the work will be demarcated with. We defer to the board if additional information should be added to the plans, or if a condition should be included in any approval, defining what the limit of work shall be demarcated with. Stormwater calc's are based on the town's design storm. Based on the project disturbance of its point seven-nine acres, the stormwater management regs and the stormwater permit are not required. The stout, the town standard design storm is held for this project review. There are ink, number three, there are ink two, there are inconsistencies between the drainage map surfaces and the calc's. Some areas are missing in the northwest and southwest sections on the plan. Number three, we typically require gravel parking areas to be modeled as impervious. It appears that the drainage systems are large enough to accommodate this model change. And for, we defer to the board if the drainage ma, map and calc's need to be revised. And planning board review.
Suzanne, I'm sorry to interrupt. And if it's all right with the, the applicant, the majority of those reviews then are usually addressed, and then, I believe that the first document up is the actual planning board decision. Because usually, the majority of them, they've been addressed, so it's, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a...
Based on the seven-nine acres, the storm management, no change in the, with the land. The drainage map and calc's now match, you, you, exactly.
There's, there is a planning board decision, so I'm just trying to...
This is the review. The revised calc's model, the gravel, gravel areas as impervious as recommended. The map and the calc's were revised, no modifications are required for the proposed stormwater management system. The revised calc's show what is proposed and will mitigate for the town's design. So it seems they're all...
Approved.
Yeah. Water. Your comments are referenced. Town water services for the property now from the main on Tommy Landers Road. The new service would have to be sized based on flow and pressure demands. If a fire line is required, two services will be needed, domestic and fire, separate. Proper cross-connection control may be required for, per the mass, plumbing code. Seth, Assessors Office. Applicant must apply for unit numbers from Engineering and confirm assignment with the Assessors Office. Planning. And then we just did planning, and that's all I have. I don't see any letters. Are there any letters in here? No. Think I kinda pulled it off.
You did fine.
That's all I have.
For the applicant.
For the record, my name's Seth Adams. I'm one of three owners of the property. My brother Nathan is here, and my father, as well, is a, is an owner of four ninety-four Thomas B. Landers Road. My father and his partner, as a little background, my father and his partner purchased property in nineteen eighty-six, and subsequently moved their business, or he and his partner's business, from Twenty-eight A in Katamet to its current location. My brother, second-generation operator of the business, and ultimately, we're seeking to try to make this a third-generation business someday by making it as profitable as we can to maintain in trying times. There have been, this property's been in front of this board three times in the past thirty, thirty years? Thirty-one years, something like that? Nineteen eighty-six, nineteen ninety-one, and nineteen ninety-three, for the improvements of the property. It has gone through three zoning changes, or two zoning changes, since my family's owned it as well. It was originally AA, then LIB, and it is currently LIA. So ultimately, we applied for a building permit, not knowing that we needed to come before both this board and the planning board. So this has been a learning experience for me, and it shouldn't be. I am a general contractor, I've been one for a very long time, but when it's your own stuff, it's different, and you look at it differently. So appreciate patience, like you did with the last applicant, and hopefully I can manage through this well. We're seeking variance or approval from the board for two forty fifty-seven H to operate what is best defined as a contractor yard. And two forty seventy H, ridge height of twenty-five feet for a building on a property more than two acres, both allowed by special permit. With regard to the use, I'll, I'll tack that one first, I think that one's more of a, there's just more to talk about there. The, it is an eight, eight-bay building to maximize flexibility. We don't intend to rent all eight bays to eight different tenants. We plan to use some of the space for our own business operation. We plan to use some of the space for our own business operation. As I presented in front of the planning board, it would be hard for me to tell you whether that was two of eight, three of eight, one of eight, five of eight. I would hate to commit and put something in writing of that nature, because our business operations change quite a bit, economically, demand, equipment, materials, all the above. So it'd be very difficult to say that. We feel that this frankly is one of the best spots in town for the intended use. It is in a, I would say, one of the most industrial areas in town. Our neighbors are the steamship authority parking lot behind us, to the, would be the south of us. There's a concrete plant to our west, and our property is to the east of this building, and to the north of us is, I think, shipping and receiving for this steamship authority. And for anybody who visited the site, the property is in a, for lack of a better term, a gully. So visibility from any spot except for the, leaving the parking lot of the hockey rink, building's pretty tough to see. It's very visible from, from the tech park side, it's almost, you know, we have other buildings that seem very prominent from, from that vantage point, but from what I would say the general public passageway, Thomas Landers Road, I can't tell you with a hundred percent certainty, but I'd be shocked if you saw more than a glimpse of the roof line as you're driving by at hopefully forty-five miles an hour. So we believe this to be a very unintrusive use, and quite frankly, I was shocked that we needed to be here for a variant for its use based on our zoning type. Nonetheless, we are here. I will address now two forty seventy H, which says that by special permit, zoning board of appeals on lots of two acres or more accessory structures may have a maximum height of twenty-five feet. In granting such special permit, the zoning board of appeals should require the lot shall not be divided below two-acre minimum, and that no accessory apartment shall be allowed and that is suitable of the site, and that the suitability of the site is sufficient to allow such an increase in height, so that there will not be any adverse impact on the neighborhood visual character or obstructions to views and vistas. Unless you like a pile of concrete, we're not going to block any view or vista, or a seventeen-hundred-car parking lot. So to me, that variant seems very easy to grant. And again, with regard to use, it feels to me and the other owners of the property to be well within character of the area, and so we ask that you grant us our application, or approval or application.
Thank you. Questions from the board, Jerry?
I think it's going to be up to the Board of Health, but what is a non-hazardous wastewater holding tank?
Thank you, thank you for bringing that up, because I wrote that down when Suzanne was reading through, I did want to address that. Suzanne mentioned something about the plumbing department and floor drains. What is required in the plumbing code for a commercial building that you can drive in are floor drains, that then theoretically, the thought is, you drive your car into the building, it leaks oil, you wash it down, it goes into the drain. That drain, you don't want to go to where roof runoff goes and leaches oil into the subsurface. So the floor drains get piped to that.
You mean a hazardous, it's not going to be non-hazard if it has oil and gasoline.
Right, so what happens is there's an oil-water separator, and then gets piped to a non-hazardous. So you'll have the oil-water separator, which is a plumbing thing, it can be inside of the building, and the outflow of that goes to a non-hazardous tank.
And where's the oil-water separator?
It's in the building and part of the plumbing code, part of it's a...
Does it go to a separate tank that's hold up?
Yeah, so the, the oil-water separator has a sump in it.
Right.
And then that sump gets pumped as hazardous waste.
I'll leave it up to the plumbing code, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Let's be on the...
Very well-defined, very well-defined in the plumbing code, the rules and regulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Scott?
Twenty-two parking spaces, is that correct?
Yeah.
The other, I apologize, couldn't get on the internet, but if a fire line is required, and I didn't see that it was or it wasn't, there's two services needed to potentially be there, one for the fire, one for domestic. Do you know what the status of that is? Do you need...
I, I need a fire line.
Yeah.
Building's over seventy-five-hundred square feet, fire line is required by the Mass Fire Code.
Okay.
So we are planning on that, along with the domestic line, and frankly, we are most likely going to be putting a non-required hydrant, just for safety. We operate sawmill, lots of wood around.
Right.
You know, knock on wood, have not had any issues yet, hopefully never will, but we're bringing the fire line down, it's going to be a sufficient size to be able to, you know, have the hydrant there anyway. So size is dependent on flow and pressure, and the type of fire protection system in the building, and is sized by fire protection engineer, along with the fire department, and is part of the application for that permit through the fire department.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Suzanne?
These are metal buildings, right?
It's a wood structure with metal siding and roofing.
Like buildings that are already there?
Yes, so we've, the, it's a pre-engineered and pre-manufactured building. This will be the third one, or actually the fourth one of this type, three from one manufacturer and one from, from another.
I've been up there, it's, they're pretty cool-looking buildings. No apartment in this?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mark?
I saw nothing. You got plenty of space, I mean, it's a nice building, it appears. I really don't have any questions or comments, other than I know across the street, instead of putting in a fire hydrant and town water, the Albert drilled a zone well, and he told me it was the smartest thing he ever did, but he used a lot more water than you do.
Yeah, yes.
This is a nice facility you have.
Thank you. He deserves all the credit, not me.
So the only question I've got, it just came up during the testimony, you're talking about renting the bays out. Initially, I thought this was all going to be just anything incidental to your business. Would you have a problem with any, well, I think that we're probably conditioned that if you wanted to do anything that's not permissible under that particular zoning district, you'd have to come back to get a, either a modification, a special perm, or otherwise, I just presume that's not going to be a problem. I don't want to hamstring you guys to not be able to make money, because there is, I think, a need for mechanics bays or garages, but I just want to make sure, my concern would be that people aren't going to start using for storage of hazardous materials, or things that could run amok in the fire code, or a use that's not permissible in a light industrial district.
I'm happy to have that being a condition of the board's ultimate approval, and I've said the same thing to the planning board.
Only other question I had is, in reading the previous special permits back in the nineteen nineties, I know there was a condition about buffering with one of the properties, and this is where this, this particular bay is going to go. Have you acquired the other two properties since then, or what are you going to do just to kind of keep the spirit of that original condition in place?
Yeah, I mean, it is a good question, and it's one that we've wrangled with quite a bit, is the, they call it a wild, I mean, we, we call it a wildlife corridor.
I'm not so much, I mean, you're now in an industrial district as opposed to agricultural back in the day.
So we've, we've done our best to maintain buffers where, frankly, where our neighbors have maintained the buffers. So for anybody who went there, the, there's, there's definitely a buffer along the back of our property that goes the entirety of the property, all the way to Tradesman's Circle. We certainly have a buffer along Thomas Landers Road, and there's a buffer basically along the steamship property as well there. Both our neighbor and ourselves have ultimately, basically removed what is, what I guess at one point, I'm sure, was treed, but again, my, my family's owned it since eighty-six and operated the sawmill since ninety or ninety-one there. I can remember high school, there being no trees there. I don't know what happened, but I can't remember what happened before then. So our neighbors and us, the Fichillos and us, have a good relationship, and so with that said, I think we could maintain the character of what's there and the relationships that's there, and if there is any issue with that, I'm sure it ultimately would probably come back in front of this board, and at that time, we would listen to what the board had to say.
Follow-up questions?
Them?
Questions from the public? Richard? How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to close the hearing?
Is there a second? Motion to close, this is a second by, give it to Scott, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Findings.
Motion approved. Motion approved with conditions by Jerry, is there a second?
Second.
Give that to Mark. Findings, or excuse me, uh, condit, findings.
Findings. Now for findings, I go through the recommendations again, pretty much.
That'll be conditions. So I'll say two forty fifty-seven H and two forty-seven D, location is four ninety-four Thomas B. Landers Road. Locus is a seven-point-four-acre site in an light industrial district. Applicant seeks to withdraw to ninety-nine-hundred-square-foot, eight-bay contractors' bay, has received planning board approval, decision is in the file. There are two previous ZBA decisions in the file affecting the property. Supposed ridge height is twenty-five feet. We have referrals indicating that the septic use is acceptable for what's there.
Board of Health, who will require for the...
The building's ninety-nine, two-hundred square feet?
Two-hundred square feet, yep. What else?
Ninety-four-hundred-square-foot parking lot, twenty-two spaces.
The location will have minimal, if any, impact on visual characteristics of the neighborhood. Suitable, the lot is suitable for what's proposed, and operated as a sawmill for thirty years. No opposition at the hearing, no opposition offered by correspondence. Applicant testified there will be no residential use this bay. Anything else?
That's good, conditions.
Conditions. Per plans, per planning board decision and requirements.
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Posting of the addresses with the numbers?
Mm-hmm. Ninety-nine-one, specifically the addresses to be provided, were provided, Unit Seven and A through H.
Soil erosion and sediment control standards?
Sure. Just put a condition that if any use, the applicant would have to come back for modification if there's any use of the contractor bay that's not permitted in the zoning district. Put in for findings, applicant testified that they may rent some of the bays at time.
Do you want a height cert at framing, or do you feel like it's, the property's sufficient?
I think seven-point-one acres with the steamship parking lot, I'm, I'm, no, I'm okay, but I don't think we need a height cert, unless somebody feels differently on the board.
No.
Yeah, this is, it's see everything around it, so why would you encumber it?
You said a perfect gully.
Yes, gully. Anything else?
Do we need to do anything for the tenants as far as hazardous, hazardous materials?
So the condition I put in, just saying, if there's anything that, you know, he'd have to come back for modification, if any tenant, or if there's any use of the contractor bay not permitted in the industrial district, so testimony was no hazardous material storage, we can certainly add that as a condition.
I mean, you may have a landscaper that might bring some fertilizer, which isn't, you know, I just don't know how to word it carefully.
Is fertilizer not hazardous, is it?
No, but I, I think, I think the fire department probably has conditions as far as storage of any volume of gasoline or such, so we could just say comply with, you know, fire department.
Refer to the fire chief.
Okay, gotcha.
Did you say this was a variance?
No, this is a special permit.
He said it, he meant special.
I meant special permit, yes.
Variance is a very drastic word of relief, you're not here for a variance.
The minute he said it, I wrote down, I was like, wait a minute, he's wrong, wait a minute.
Anything else?
I think we're good.
Good job.
Norrie, you forgot anything?
I think you're good.
Right, all those in favor, please, anybody say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that concludes our new hearings for the evening. Onto the open meeting portion, voting minutes of August twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two.
We are tabling those.
Tabling the minutes of August twenty-fifth. Board updates. Eddie?
I guess, Norrie, did we hear anything from the selectmen on any applications or anything like that? That might be a board update.
I have not heard, so I think for the public, we could just express that we do have an opening for a full voting board member. We also have an opening for an associate board member, so if people are interested, they would apply with the select board for that.
Great, thank you.
I think it's, does it close the twenty-first or the twenty-second? Did I read that in the notice?
Not even, it was advertised.
Yeah, I saw it advertised.
Advertising?
Yep.
But that doesn't mean somebody can't come down here by the twenty-first.
No, and I think the select board, perhaps if there's interest, they would maintain a letter.
Thank you.
Future agenda items.
I was thinking that maybe in the future, at some point in time, and I'm just getting my feet wet here, whatever, but I, well, with the, the Finnegan, I had some issues, and I was on the website, and it, as it turns out, he didn't introduce the proper, proper documentation in a timely fashion, or whatever. But in looking at the, the application that we have, the form...
Should we be discussing Fingerin?
What, I guess the question is, are we talking about the form or a specific application? We can't be discussing a specific, okay, a procedural form, okay, just to make sure we're clear.
When you go in and you look for the application, it requires that the lot coverage and, you know, lot coverage by parking lots and whatever else, and, you know, I don't see that on here. I think that maybe we could amend this and, and make it a little better, a little more friendly for us, you know? I'm one that has to deal with hard copies of, of everything. And also, while I was thinking of that, and, I'm sorry, one particular decision sticks in my craw, would there not be a place on the application where you would indicate whether this property lot, whatever, had been turned down for a building permit before, subject to any, you know, what, I can't write how you...
So why don't we add an agenda item at a future date about...
Yeah, I mean, it's...
Updating or streamlining the application to have other additional information?
Sure, absolutely. And just for the board's knowledge, the town has started utilizing Permitise as a software program. The building department is using that, and there is a module for zoning. It's not ready yet. We're going to be launching that at some point in the future, we're working with the software manufacturer right now. So there is an intent that we will be connected into all that. So there is an intent that we will be connected into all that data that connects also with the building department. So hopefully, the hope is, as time goes by, that when you put in a particular address, back decisions and that sort of thing will also eventually be available to everybody. So that should also provide a better rounded piece of information.
Yeah, that, and then that's all good, but I think if we had something in here that put it on the applicant, had it been on the application, I won't name the address, it may have prevented a lot of, you know, I'm just, this, I just want to put it on the agenda sometime in the future, and, you know, the further into the future, the more I'll know what I'm talking about, but I mean, you know, is the project, is the property subject to any enforcement, or, you know, I think there's more than we could put on that and streamline it, just make it easier for us and everyone else.
I don't disagree, so get that on the agenda at a future date. I would just encourage, we might want to seek input from our, majority of our applicants and our zoning practitioners in town about what they'd like to see the application, or if there's ways that could be improved or streamlined or tightened up.
Right. I'm sure everybody's got some sort of suggestion, but I don't think it's a bad idea, at least kick it around.
Anything else for future agenda items, Jerry?
All right, seeing none. Next meeting will be September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two, six-thirty, here at the Selectmen's Meeting Room at Town Hall. At that, we are adjourned.